Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council meeting for Monday, November 25th. Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country. And we may not have had the microphones on, but thank you to our very own Grand Prairie Council Choir for the audio as we sung that live. It's a shame that we didn't have a larger gallery tonight to be able to enjoy that. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Councillor Rice.
I move adoption of the city council meeting minutes held November 12, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. We move on to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. So that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and let us address council on any community-related matter. I understand we had one delegation from CPA Alberta, Ms. Mika Degroot. Mika, if you'd like to come and join us at the table here, you can introduce yourself and make a presentation to council.
Always nerve-wracking to sit up here because, you know, it's going somewhere you don't have control over. There's lots of you I don't know, lots of you I feel very glad to see, and I'm looking forward to a very productive three or four years in the future with the Canadian Paraplegic Association and the Council of Grand Prairie. Thank you for having me here. I just wanted to introduce this Canadian Paraplegic Association to the new council members. We work with people who have spinal cord injuries and other physical disabilities. That's a little bit different, not too much, from people with developmental disabilities who have challenges of something from life, from birth. Whereas a spinal cord injury or a physical disability that is obtained, acquired through disease is a little bit more challenging for some people because they all of a sudden have to redesign their life. I want to say I'm very looking forward to the redesign of the washrooms in your main floor here. I'm certain that with the bylaws that are out there, the barrier-free guide, that those bathrooms will be addressed because, as our council members know, they're really hard to get into with wheelchairs, which is one reason why I'm here. The CPA has designated May the 2nd to be our Chair Leaders' Day in Grand Prairie, and with the blessings of Downtown Association, we'll be doing it downtown. So we're really looking forward to having one or two of the newer of you in our wheelchairs and discovering what is life like when you're trying to leave your parking space in the public parking places and then have to go through the two blocks to get downtown so that you can go shopping in a store that doesn't have the right transition from the sidewalks. Part of the challenge is that private owners don't have to make their places wheelchair-accessible until they have to renovate them, and that's a real serious challenge for a city who wants to be wheelchair-accessible. One of the things that I do is client services as well as community development throughout the region, and my coworker Winona works with the Aboriginal community. It's very important to remember for us that we have such a broad base of people we work with, and many of them shop here in Grand Prairie, and that's one of our interests in being here. The International Day for Persons with Disabilities is indeed an international day, and the CPA takes the lead on that in Grand Prairie, or has done traditionally. It is December 3rd this year, and there are celebrations starting at 10:30 at the Eastlink Centre on that day, and I really hope that each and every one of you are interested in coming. I'll leave an extra poster here in case you want to put it some prominent location in your place where you work. And at this point, I don't think I have anything else. We certainly would like to meet with committee members or whoever are interested in accessible taxis. We do have a group of people who are interested in dealing with accessible questions where from different service providers throughout the city, and if you've got questions for me an hour later, please feel free to approach me.
Thanks, Mika, for the introduction. Are there any questions for Mrs. Degroot? Looks like council's going to let you off easy tonight, but thanks very much for coming and making the introduction, and we'll look forward to seeing you throughout the course of the year, Mika. So as I said, this is the delegation portion of our agenda. It is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We have this opportunity at every regular city council meeting, and just want to make sure the public knows that they're welcome to come and address us on any issue. Seeing that there's nobody else coming forward, then we'll move on to the delegation portion. We move on in our agenda. We don't have any public hearings tonight, no unfinished business, and no reports, so we go straight into committee business. We'll start with 9.1, the Community Growth Committee from November 12th. And Councillor Clayton, I believe you chaired that committee.
I did chair that.
Councillor Clayton, I just want to make sure that you get your thank you, get your microphone on there, and then you could go.
I did chair that meeting. It was held on November 12th. I did have one amendment to the minutes prior to accepting them in regards to the development permit for a secondary suite. It was noted that my husband had made a comment regarding a conflict objecting to the development. It actually wasn't an objection. It was he had submitted a letter requesting information for the development, so I just wanted to make that correction to the minutes, and that would be the only amendment I had.
Okay, sure. Thanks for that catch. So then we just take the motion to receive that set of minutes.
I shall move that they be received with the amendment.
Great. Thanks, Councillor Clayton. So motion, receive the minutes. Community growth held November 12, 2013. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Obviously, we had one catch. Anything else outstanding? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. I think we had a couple of motions coming out of that committee meeting. Councillor Clayton, do you want to make the motion on 9.11?
Yes, sorry. There was a recommendation there as well that council support the application for the regional collaboration grant and request more information on impacts of being a managing partner of a successful grant application.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. And just for clarity, the motion doesn't specifically say it, but I think we need to be specific that it's for the Wapiti River Water Management Plan. Need to include that.
Yes. If we could, a friendly amendment to that would be great. Thank you.
So I'll just make sure that that's included in the motion. Discussion and debate, Councillor Rice.
I'm somewhat confused by this. When we had our last regional municipalities meeting, my understanding was that we jointly agreed that we would put in an application for the dinosaur museum and for the waterline for Wembley, and that we would have our city manager, the county city manager, Sex Smith, Wembley, all of them get together and come up with a suggested, so that we weren't all in there scrambling for the same regional collaboration grants, nor would we give the province the opportunity to say, "You guys just got one. Take a hike." That it would be a true regional plan as to the succession of applying for these, and so it seems to me we're the ones breaking the rule.
Well, actually, I will let our city manager speak about the update of that sort of coordinated effort, and I can share some other information too. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Councillor Rice, you are absolutely correct. That's the plan that was, that came out of that inter-municipal meeting back in September. That was the approach we were going to take. I did contact the other CAOs in the region to follow up, as you just mentioned. There was, because of a number of reasons, we weren't able to get together, and with the deadline looming, the other municipalities had gone ahead and passed these resolutions as being brought forward tonight. The deadline is next week, and it was felt we might as well just proceed. The county is dealing with it as well. They dealt with it today. So it was not like breaking the rules, but we all agree that we're going to proceed on this particular one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much, City Manager Greg. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton? Councillor Clayton, you'll just have to get your microphone on there. Clicked off when we went through the, there you go.
Thank you. 9.1.2 Development Permit D130827. It's a parking lot with 18 stalls and a waiver of fees. The recommendation, the council waived development permit D130827. The fees and securities totaling $1,395 for the development and construction of a parking lot of 18 stalls.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Just to, Councillor Rice.
Rather eager to dump ever more money into this development. What was the rationale in waiving the fees on this that has, I think, in excess of about $3 or $4 million of provincial money funneled for the city?
Well, I can certainly, if any of the other committee members wanted to, they could certainly speak to it, but the city of Grand Prairie has a policy regarding affordable housing projects, and this fit the policy, so the committee saw fit to continue to do as we have with any other project that's come forward under that policy. So I don't remember the policy number offhand, but we certainly, it's been a longstanding one for affordable housing projects. Any other discussion or debates? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Oh, Councillor Clayton?
For Councillor Rice was that the discussion was that the parking stalls were going to help alleviate parking stress on the first floor where there was other than residential parking, so there was discussion in regards to, so that people didn't have to park on the streets around the facility.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
There was 9.2.1. Community Knowledge Campus Sports Field Development. The recommendation that city council approve the Community Knowledge Campus Sports Field Master Plan as presented.
Thanks very much. Another important business.
Oh, was it? I apologize. That would, nothing else for me then. I'm just taking Lauren's work.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Thanks for stepping in and chairing that committee meeting when the regular chair was away. So move on to 9.2, the Community Living Committee from November 12th. Councillor Radburn, I think you were handling that committee.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I was beginning to wonder, actually. Just kidding. I move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held November 12, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything that we missed? No corrections? Call for the vote. Thank you. Councillor Rice, you had a question?
How exciting it is that the senior men's provincial fastball champions and the senior men's and women's Western Canadian fastball championships will be held here in our centennial year.
Yeah, certainly great news. I don't know if Councillor Radburn was going to cover that from the minutes, but.
Was he? Okay. Well, I didn't trust me gave Councillor Rice bad advice.
Councillor Radburn, you want to carry on with the motion from that.
Thank you. I move that council approve the Community Knowledge Campus Sports Field Master Plan as presented.
Thanks very much.
Presented after much consultation with supporting groups in the city, and was presented and supported by committee.
Okay. Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? This is also a result of the partnership between the city of Grand Prairie and the Public School Board and the Catholic School Board as well, and so all the partners are in agreement that this is the right plan for the site. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Radburn, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Actually, there is. Thank you. Actually, the meeting mostly was getting information to us so we could consider referring budget requests to the budget session we had. So, for example, the fastball association and the before-mentioned provincial and Western Canadian championships were looking for money. As most of these, council will recall, came up at budget time, but for those watching or listening tonight, we can go through them. The Women's, the Odyssey House Women's Residence, the CKC Sports Field, Year One, the Off-leash Dog Park Expansion, Electronic Messages Messaging Boards, signs for CKC, were all discussed and referred to budget. We also received a letter from the Catholic Schoolistic asking for $500,000 to be a partner to that tune of something in there to be announced, New School. Committee decided to refer that back to administration to discuss this with the Catholic schoolers that can look at opportunities for that partnership before it actually came to budget, probably next fall. Habitat Humanity was there as well, and so the motion that was made was that we would ask administration to look for opportunities for supporting Habitat Humanity projects and report back at a future date. I think that covers the agenda. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. And that takes us to 9.3 then, Community Safety, and I think you stepped in and chaired that meeting for us as well, too, didn't you?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held November 19, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that one? Anything we need to catch today? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Motion carries. Councillor Radburn, I don't think there are any items coming out, but anything you want to highlight?
Actually, the agenda had, I think, four items. First was we were introduced to the new deputy fire chief, Chief Dallam, who brought our new, selected new deputy, and that was Kelly Gilde. Secondly, we supported four Safe Growth Matching Grants, Peacebuilding, Kool-Aid Society, Safe Communities, and Market Manor, all received $2,500 matching grants. We received an update on the subdivision development approval process. They had done some work and had, the report really outlined some opportunities and challenges of that department in that area of city service, and it was an update because the next day, actually, they were now meeting to look at those challenges and opportunities and decide what actions to take to move us along, to improve service in that area, and so that report will be coming at a future meeting as well. And finally, we had an update from Trails and Sidewalk Servicing. Internal departments have been working to coordinate our service in that area, and I think that was a positive from a working group discussions. They did come forth with a suggested bylaw and policy revision that would require landowners whose property abuts on public utilities be responsible to remove snow and ice from half the sidewalk fronting the public, PUL, adjacent to their property. Committee decided not to proceed with that this time, so we just received the report from information. We felt that we're not sure of the advisability of that. We wanted to see what the community mobility plan looked like when it comes to us, and we wanted to take a look at resources, budget resources, in upcoming budgets with respect to can we actually enforce what can be done in terms of maintenance internally and enforcement to look at that. So basically, it was received for information, but no action taken. May come back to it at a later time. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. And that takes us to item 9.4, the Corporate Services Committee, and I think we had another stand-in, Councillor O'Toole. I think you handled that meeting.
Very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to have council receive the minutes for the Corporate Services Committee meeting held November 19, 2013.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, anything you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
We had three reports, the unaudited financial statements presented by Saleen Daffier. We also had the key performance indicators from July to September, and that was done by Dawn Sauvay, and a Business Enhancement Review Team update, and that was also done by Dawn Sauvay.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. So that handles all of our committee business already. We had no items of correspondence, no delegate, well, sorry, I guess we could receive the presentation from CPA, from Mika Degroot from CPA for information. Councillor Rice?
I move that we receive the presentation from CPA for information.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. So we'll call for the vote on that motion. Thank you. That motion carries. We had no notices of motion. We have no council member reports from our agencies, boards, and commissions. Oh, except for Councillor Teason. He said that you did have a library board you wanted to make a note.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I actually had quite a few. I thought it was just the library board, but my memory might be getting spotty already. Go figure. Anyways, I had quite a week, actually, on our first council meeting, and I did go to the library committee meeting and just introduced myself to my fellow committee members, and so it was nice to meet a lot of those people there. We also went to the raising of the Métis Flag and Proclamation Reading Event, something that I took in some of my clients with CMHA to that event, which was quite nice, and we had some good stew there as well afterwards. Moose stew, I believe it was, right, Councillor McLean? Yes, it was awesome.
You jumped to Round Table.
Oh, so never mind, sorry. Yeah, library, that's it. I thought that was Round Table.
But it was good. The next item following immediately on behind committee reports is Round Table, so we'll move to Councillor Rice with AUMA, maybe?
I do have AUMA. The AUMA convention was held, a very successful convention. Sure, there were some there that at times thought it was the Chris and Kevin Show. They certainly made their presence known. Grand Prairie did not fade into the woodwork. I have to commend Mayor Given on his presentation on the future of municipal government. A preliminary look at the evaluations that were handed in at the end of the convention would indicate that that was the session that overwhelmingly received the most positive response, particularly Mayor Given's portion of it, so I congratulate him and thank him for that.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Much appreciated. It was a great convention for many other reasons, some of which I think we'll probably mention as we go around Round Table. So speaking of Round Table, it's immediately following our reports from the committees that council represents, so the committees that we've appointed each council member to. We do that in sort of a council member reports. We follow that with Round Table. We'll start with Councillor Teason, just that we can start right there, then we'll come around this way.
All right. So now I can go on with what I was going on with before. Thank you so much for the correction. I'm going to actually still throw in the library committee in there because it wasn't an official meeting with the library committee, as I didn't stay through the whole committee meeting, as we had council business to attend to here in a council meeting. But as I was saying before, it was great to meet all the members on the committee and introduce myself. They were very sad to see Kevin O'Toole gone, and they were missing Mr. Councillor Logan as well in the whole process, but they're a great bunch, and I look forward to working with them even further. Following that, it was a fairly busy week leading right up to the AUMA convention. As I was saying earlier, I went to the raising of the Métis Flag, and we had the proclamation of Louis Rial, and we sang some songs. I brought some clients with me, and it was a good time that everyone had, and Councillor McLean and I went off for some moose stew afterwards with a big group of people. I think we filled the entire offices of, yeah, the Métis Association. And then later on that evening, Councillor Tarant, Councillor Radburn, and yourself, Mayor Given, we all went to the Neighborhood Associations Mixer, where we shared some ideas with several different Neighborhood Associations members about how they could be more involved and get things done. From there, I had a great meeting with our homecoming event for the 100th anniversary with our committee meeting there, and just shooting around some ideas and doing some basic planning. And on that same day, I met with Michelle Gardner to talk about the Mighty Peace Waterside Alliance and get a little up-to-date on that. And then from there, it was AUMA convention the whole way. I was the only councillor there on Monday, and then I ran into Councillor McLean on the Tuesday, and we were flying with our Promote Helen Rice for AUMA Presidency campaign, and we were talking with every newcomer and every old fogey in the building that was involved in politics to elect Helen Rice as our next president, and as you can see by her new name tag, it was a successful bid. So all in all, a very busy couple of weeks, but also very rewarding as well at the end of it.
And just imagine that's only like the first couple of weeks. It's better from here. And Councillor Logan?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Councillor Logan. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A couple of events, November 13th, as well as Councillor Teason was saying, raising the flag for the Métis Week. We did have some moose stew, and it was very good, and I was very proud to be there on behalf of the city, and as well, they were very proud as well. So you hear a lot about Louis Rial. November 14th, there was also orientation review, and I'll just get right to AUMA. Couple I want to speak to quickly. One that I thought was really big, and there was a few councillors and a director, Ray Show, was in that one, assessment management about stuff that breaks down, and then you kind of notice it after the fact, and say we have a few things like Beer Creek Pool and stuff, and this is a new way coming out that we could maybe be on top of this and maybe it not happen in the near future down the road. So that was very good. The other one is Councillor Rice was looking forward, was debating as well, was on Bill Given on municipal government, inspiring the evolution, and about equitable, how we could work together and make our tax dollars better. I thought it was a very rounded session, and I want to thank Mayor Given for being a part of the panel. And what Councillor Rice never said is part of the act, there were some cupcakes outside the lobby there, and they were going quite well and very well-recognized. Another one I'd like to say is council worked very hard at the AUMA convention. It was my best because one of our councillors became the president of all her years of experience, and she will bring it forward at the timely manner to the changes that hopefully could come about in the next couple of years, and I think we got the right person in the right place for the job. And besides a few of us wearing shirts all the time and working very hard and diligently, there was another councillor as well here. He's wearing one of the shirts that I wasn't in the pick with Councillor O'Toole, and there was two or three, and I missed that picture with my shirt on, and I felt left out, but Councillor Radburn is wearing the shirt now, and he even had some new shirts for the event, but he had that shirt over them, so never got to see them. But anyways, I just want to say I had a great time at AUMA, and I'm glad Helen is in the post. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councillor McLean. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. November 13th, I also attended Louis Rial Day, Métis Association Proclamation and Flag Raising, and then I attended the Neighborhood Association Council Mixer, and I was, had the opportunity to, on behalf of us, bring greetings. November 14th, council orientation, and then had Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Board Meeting, and then I slipped out in the afternoon and brought greetings at the Salvation Army Kettles Kickoff. Budget review the 15th. November 20, 22nd was AUMA Convention in Calgary. My notes here, I just. My notes here, I just, I guess, I was proud of Helen mostly, but I was also proud of our staff and council as a team. I think it was, as I was sharing with Mayor Given today, it was definitely a team-building time for us all. It was great. I also wanted to mention, for people who might be of interest, three elected members of Grand Prairie Council have been now, will be with Helen, who will have been AUMA president. First was Mayor George Repka, next was Mayor Gord Grayden of the time, and now Counselor Rice. So kudos to Helen to be in that grouping. And today, I attended my first Downtown Association Strategic Directions Committee meeting, so I look forward to working on Downtown Association Board. Thank you.
Counselor Tarant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So I too was able to attend the raising of the Métis Flag, and it's a great event there. Went to the Neighborhood Association Mixer, and something that was really interesting there was that there was some people that were brand-new to Grand Prairie, some were there for, just been here for a year or two, and so it was great to see them actually getting involved and jumping aboard right away, so that was great to see. I attended the QB2 Foundation Gala Event on behalf of council, and also went to the, had an airport, went to have an air, tour of the airport, and so with my role in the Airport Commission, so it was great to see all the operations there, and I look forward to working with them. Right before we flew out to Calgary, I went to, we had the Walker Quarter Planning Meeting, and I was just able to stay shortly and greet people, and got to meet the other new member, Bill Smith, our representative from the MD of Greenview, so that was good, had a good chat with him. Also, council may be interested to know that Dan Wong was invited to stay on the board, so he's continuing his role with the Planning Society there. And with AUMA, I do want to say kudos to Mayor Given. The presentation he had there was excellent, very well-received from the people I talked to after the presentation. There was a very positive sentiment, and look forward to, you know, what's coming out of some of the reviews that are happening there. One of the most interesting things I got to go to at AUMA was the MGA Review Session, and there was really good analysis on different revenue sources that are available to cities and what we could possibly propose in the MGA Review, and so I really enjoyed that. And I'll end with kudos to Counselor Rice. It's great to have you aboard the AUMA, so thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarant. Move to Councilor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I also attended the Orientation Sessions on the 14th, as well as the Budget Review, which was a very educational day. I learned a lot. I also well joined a few fellow councillors at the Festival of Trees, their 25th anniversary. It was an excellent event, and the volunteers did an incredible job. It wrapped up last night, Festival of Trees, and from what I hear, the numbers are going to be record-setting, so it was a great event overall. It kicked off by the gala. From then, I attended the AUMA, which was an excellent opportunity to meet some fellow councillors from around the province and taken some great sessions. I also, much like Counselor McLean, thoroughly enjoyed the Asset Management Session, and took in a couple other ones that were very interesting, and some were educational and some were just sheerly out of interest. At the end of the day, it was, the highlight of the event was definitely Mayor, or sorry, Counselor Rice becoming president of AUMA, and very proud of her and look forward to her leading an excellent organization with her experience, and look forward to the next year or hopefully two from there. Thank you.
Councilor Clayton, Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On the week of the 12th to the 15th, I was spending some time down in Disneyland with my grandchildren, a trip that we had planned for a long time. On the 15th, I was back here for Budget Review and also 100th Anniversary Committee. The 16th, I attended the Métis Local AGM at the Theresa Sargent Hall, and you were there as well as a few other guests of honor. And also later that night, I attended the Adbridge General Circle of Services Community Round Dance at the GRP, GPRC. GPRC is a partner with the Métis Association, so it was a very, very well-attended event, and it's the first event that they're going to host over the next period of four years. So they signed a contract to do three more round dance sessions. On the 19th, I attended the Corporate Services Committee Meeting. The 20th, I went to the AUMA, and we met later that night with the Atco Electric Group. It was a good meeting that we had, and had some good discussion. Also attended very many good workshops that were represented through discussion already tonight, and it was a great event. I also got to meet the Combat sports Commission Chair for Calgary, somebody that I've been talking to and emailing for the last three years, and we actually spent quite a bit of time together discussing some of our concerns, mutual concerns, and I'm hoping that in the next few months, we'll have some, some discussion regarding maybe going forward with the province. Also, I talk about the AUMA, the opening ceremonies, we had Mayor Nancy from Calgary did a fantastic speech. We also had Chris Hatfield there, and what a remarkable man, some of the endeavors that he's done over the last 25, 30 years, and I was very well-impressed with this, this AUMA conference. I've been attending four of them, and this year, I felt like I was really getting a lot of benefit from it. Not that I never got any benefit from before, but it just seemed that I was fit in here and got to meet a number of different people over the years, and get to see some familiar faces, and discussion was easy to have. I also, on Saturday night, I attended the French Association Presentation of Jazz Art, and I got to spend some time looking at some artists, listening to some fine music, and my wife discussed, talking about buying some art, and we won. We got some art at home now. Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So in a short break with the tradition, I'm actually going to do my Round Table next, and then we'll let Counselor Rice go last, so she can speak about some of the things that happened over the last weeks for her. So I also attended the, also attended the raising of the Métis Flag and the proclamation for Louis Riel Day. It was a pleasure to do that for the second year in a row. Obviously, that evening was also the Neighborhood Association's Mixer, and the next day, there were the Council Orientation Sessions. On Saturday, the 16th, I also attended the Métis Local Annual General Meeting. Would like to recognize Andrew Carrar, who obviously does a lot for our community and for the Métis community, and it was a pleasure to be able to take part in a sash dance with Counselor O'Toole and Minister Drysdale. If you want to see somebody who can sash dance, Minister Drysdale's your guy. And that evening, it was also the Festival of Trees Gala, which I attended. On Monday, the 18th, I was at the Grand Prairie Public Library for a proclamation reading, proclaiming National Addictions Awareness Week in the city, and also for the launch of the Safe and Sober Tree. So if you go to the Grand Prairie Public Library, there is a Christmas tree there, and you can sign a declaration that says that you commit to being, acting responsibly and safely over the course of the Christmas season, and so would encourage everybody to go by and make that commitment as we get into the holiday season where there's Christmas parties and events and New Year's parties, to think about what you can do to be responsible and ensure the safety of yourself and others. And then, of course, there was the AUMA Convention. As has been mentioned before, very proud to see Counselor Rice elected as AUMA president. I know that she'll do a fantastic job, and certainly very proud of the way that council came together to support her, but ultimately, I think it was Counselor Rice's dedication to the organization and to municipalities across the province that won the day, and I think that was recognized by the delegates there who overwhelmingly voted her into her position, so Counselor Rice, congratulations and well-earned, and we'll give a last Round Table spot to you.
I'd like to thank council for their incredible support. It was just amazing the way, and the enthusiasm which council threw themselves into, this council and the staff as well, and the really interesting was that it not, did not go unnoticed. Following the convention, I had numerous people express to me how amazed they were at our council's camaraderie and very obviously mutual respect, and said, "Do you guys ever disagree?" And when I told them that yes, during budget sessions, there were several five, four votes, they were absolutely amazed, and one even said, "You guys need to be a role model for other councillors, that you can disagree and leave that council table and retain that very obvious sense of enjoyment of each other and very obvious respect for each other." So I think kudos to the entire council who came together, and as I said, it was not unnoticed across all Alberta municipalities. So again, I want to really thank you, and I think we're, as I mentioned, Mayor Given's presentation, and so we certainly have a framework within, with which to work within on amendments to the Municipal Government Act, and I met with the President of AMDNC, which is the rural arm, and said, "We've got to open the talks about the police funding. We've got to see some movement on that," and he agreed. So already, it starts to be exciting.
Well, look forward to an exciting year. Counselor Rice, through the helmet, and congratulations, and a round of applause, I think, is probably... Counselor Clayton, did you have one other thing?
Just add one more thing. It was a real highlight at the end of AUMA to have Tanil, our Grand Prairie hero, entertain the crowds. Her story is truly an inspiration to youth, and as well, it makes you very proud to know her and to be from Grand Prairie, when she just brings joy and anticipation to what youth possibly can do in the future. So I'd like to thank Tanil, and it was a big surprise as I spoke to her that morning after her performance. She wasn't allowed to tell anybody, so it was very exciting for her to be there, and then she had just got news that Helen had won, so it was an excellent wrap-up for our AUMA. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. So, and with that, we're adjourned. Thanks very much.